We're calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions and how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Onto public comment and closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Is there any public comment on closed session items?
There are no public comments at this time, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. Evening. My name is Elba Gonzalez-Mares, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elba Gonzalez Mares, y esta es la mesa de educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa. NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La Mesa de Educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión esta noche en la que todos pueden participar de forma remota. Puede unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the More button on the bottom of your screen and choose Language Interpretation from Within the Zoom Application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meetings are Marcy Valdivieso and Claudia Lindgren. Claudia, please translate these directions to our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches a todos. Los servicios de interpretación van a estar disponibles, del inglés al español y viceversa. Si quieren tener acceso a los servicios de interpretación, favor de fijarse en la pantalla. En la parte inferior, ustedes van a ver un icono a mano derecha que tiene un mapa de mundo. Pueden hacer un clic o un chasqueo y se pueden elegir los servicios de interpretación al español. De otra manera, también puede tener acceso a esta junta por medio de su teléfono. Solamente puede elegir la selección que dice More en relación al lenguaje. Sin embargo, los servicios de interpretación no estarían disponibles de esa manera, ya que se utilizan en un canal separado al inglés y al español. Gracias.
Thank you. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nbusd.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Magaña.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Ricer.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Shu.
Present.
Trustee Dooley.
Present.
Quorum present, thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only due to COVID-19 shelter-in-place order. We continue in uncharted territory as we deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. As trustees, we have returned to the boardroom in solidarity with our staff, given that our school campuses are now reopened for our students. However, in order to ensure access to our meetings without any limitations during the persisting pandemic, we are continuing with online remote access via Zoom for the public and guests. I would like to thank our employees, our families, and the entire NVUSD community for how you have supported each other and come together during these unprecedented times. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California for the governor's order. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Trustees are on video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Due to special circumstances, the superintendent will be present by video only. Other staff members are present, but by audio only. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the Raise Hand feature in Zoom. You'll be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. There are two ways to make a public comment within the time allotted for public comment on an eligible agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at nbusd.org/Board. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when the public, when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it's your turn to speak, the last four digits of your phone number will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand by phone are available on the district's website at nbusd.org/Board. In addition, community members were allowed to submit comments via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org up until 8:00 AM this morning. Public comment received after 8:00 AM the day of the scheduled meeting will not be read into the record. However, the public comment will be announced as received after the deadline, and it will become part of the meeting archive as long as it is received before the meeting is officially called to order. For every agenda item, I will prompt the meeting participants who have joined us via Zoom for public comment. Please follow the instructions just provided when you would like to comment on an item. We have been called to order and conducted our attendance roll call. We will go forward with our agenda. I will now ask trustee Gracia for a report on closed session items.
There is nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. I know we're on Zoom, but today everyone who's watching us will notice that we're wearing pink, and we're here wearing pink in support of our superintendent, Dr. Masetti. And in honor of that, I will ask Dr. Masetti to lead us on our flag salute.
Oh, thank you, President Gonzalez-Mares and the school board for all of your support and that expression of kindness. So here we go. Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful. Thank you, Dr. Masetti.
Thank you for the opportunity to lead in the flag salute.
Now on to our announcement. This meeting is recorded for live streaming and archiving on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced, located on the district webpage at nbusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. We now move on into our approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Right. We now move on to our approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose or need to abstain? Great, thank you. Now on to recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have anybody joining us today?
We do. So I'm going to ask Mr. Ruiz if he could please promote Ms. Leslie Walters here, joining us from NAPS. Ms. Walder?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Thank you, doctor. Thank you, President Gonzalez-Mares and members of the Board of Trustees, student representative and members of the Napa Valley Unified Administration. I'm glad to be here this evening.
And I do not see Mr. Hector Gallegos from CSEA nor Ms. Gail Young from NBEA this evening. So thank you for joining us, Ms. Walder.
Thank you for joining us. I agree. All right. So now let's move on to our recognition of Students of the Month. We will start with Napa Valley Adult Education for students both of November and December. So I'll ask Principal Rick Jordan to lead us in this.
Good evening. Rick won't be here tonight. My name is Laura Leonard Broll, and I will be introducing the Students of the Month. Should I proceed? Okay.
Yes, continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, Dr. Masetti and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Laura Leonard Broll. I am the Program Supervisor here at Napa Valley Adult Education, and it's my pleasure to celebrate the Adult Ed Students of the Month. You see Maria Hernandez here on the screen. So we do have two special students that we'd like to acknowledge this evening. Maria, she's trying to log in, so I think she's getting some help, so hopefully she can join us. I'll start by introducing Maria, and then Kristin Ward will introduce our ASE Student of the Month. Maria Hernandez epitomizes the ideal ESL or the ideal adult student. She's hardworking and consistent, dedicated to learning, and pleasant to have in class. This comes from her teacher, Kit Lucas. Citizenship preparation class is special because, is special because for everyone, the goal of the class, obtaining American citizenship, is profound and very personal. The process is long, expensive, and demanding. These students are required to know things that many American citizens have no idea about. It requires many hours of targeted study and considerable proficiency in English. Maria Hernandez has been in the United States for 30 years and has been in and out of ESL classes during this time while raising her two children, both Napa High students. She learned about Napa Valley Adult Education Citizenship Preparation Class from a friend who took the class and became a citizen soon after. Becoming a citizen was a goal Maria had for a very long time, especially the last four years. She thought the test would be difficult because of her age, but she convinced herself she could do it. She wanted her voice to be heard, and she wanted to be counted. Maria joined Kit's in-person class, Citizenship, last year right before the COVID lockdown. These were difficult and chaotic times, but as soon as we resumed learning online, Maria showed up right away, prepared to continue studying via Zoom, ready with her computer and headphones. Things at the United States Citizenship and Integration Services had already slowed down during the last four years. Then during COVID, they temporarily shut down their offices altogether, delaying naturalization appointments even further. After a wait of more than a year, Maria finally got her naturalization interview appointment on Election Day last year. So she got her appointment on Election Day last year. All of her hopes, hard work, and preparation paid off when she passed her interview, was sworn in as a citizen, and hurried back to Napa to cast a ballot in the presidential election, all in the same day. Now Maria wants to improve her writing and speaking skills so she can work in an office environment soon. She even feels confident enough now to contact her representative, Mike Thompson, with any of her concerns. Her teacher, Kit Lucas, specifically said, "I'm very proud of Maria, and I'm happy that I could play a small part in helping her reach her goal. The U.S. is very fortunate to have people like Maria and many of my other students as its newest citizens." So I'd like to congratulate Maria Hernandez as the ESL Student of the Month. Thank you. So next, do I move on? Kristin Ward will introduce the ASE Student of the Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Good evening, board members and all guests and students that are here. My name is Kristin Ward, and I am the Program Coordinator at Napa Adult School, working with our high school diploma, GED, and ABE students. This month, I would like to honor Rodrigo Hurtado. And Rodrigo is here with us this evening, and I think Maria is also here with us. Welcome, guys. Thank you for taking your evening and joining us in celebrating your huge accomplishments here at the adult school. So Rodrigo, he has been my student, and he graduated earning his high school diploma about two weeks ago. Rodrigo enrolled at the very beginning of this term, and in less than five months, he finished all of his credits to earn his high school diploma. A little background about Rodrigo and his journey on getting to his diploma. Rodrigo was at Napa High School, and he transferred into our program at the adult school when he realized that he was shy on his credits and that the program at the adult school was going to get him to his credits at the pace that he wanted to accomplish. After he left Napa High, he took about one year off before he joined me in my program. And in this time when Rodrigo was working, he discovered how important getting your high school diploma really is and how much he needed it and how much he wanted to achieve that goal for himself and his family and for his future. While Rodrigo was in the program for about five months, as I said, he was a very consistent student. He was very hardworking. He was always on Zoom with me. He was a very good model, role model for all of the other students as far as being consistent, hardworking, and what our goals can, how they can happen for us when we work that hard. So that was wonderful to have Rodrigo being so consistent and so hardworking. As I said, Rodrigo's motivation to earn his high school diploma so quickly was his family that he lives with here in Napa. Rodrigo's next steps are to continue his education, possibly going to college, as well as pursuing a job. And possibly, I hope for Rodrigo that he can do both, and I know that he can. So I hope that he decides to do both. Rodrigo feels very grateful that he was chosen as our Student of the Month, and he thanks NVE staff members and the school for providing him the opportunity to do that. Rodrigo, I know I already told you, but I'm very proud of you. I hope your family is. I know that they are, and I know great things will come for you and your future, and you want to just continue to work hard for them like you did in the program for me. Great job, and congratulations, Rodrigo. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Before we move on to Vintage High School, President Gonzalez-Mares, I think Maria made it on and Rodrigo's on. Do either of you want to say anything?
No. Okay. I'm a little tired. I'm just, I want to say thank you, everyone, for helping me and my citizenship classes. And I'm very proud of me because I think I never make it to do it. But I did, I did. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Maria.
You're welcome.
Rodrigo, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rodrigo.
Thank you, Napa Valley Adult Education, and congratulations again to Maria Hernandez and Rodrigo Hurtado for their accomplishments.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Great to have you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're on to now Vintage High School. I thought I did see Principal O'Connor.
Yep, I'm here. All right. Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Masetti, NVUSD Board of Education, district leaders, and audience members attending this evening. It is with extraordinary pride that I present to you this evening two incredible Vintage High School Board Students of the Month. Vintage's Board Student of the Month for November is Harrison Wright. Harrison has found consistent academic success at Vintage during his four years, never earning below a 4.0 in his seven semesters thus far and averaging a 4.54 overall. Harrison's academic successes are complemented by his athletic endeavors and contributions to his community. Sometimes these areas all overlap for Harrison. As a young child, Harrison played baseball for Yountville Little League. His interest and skill in Little League translated to him playing baseball at Vintage, starting his ninth grade year. But that wasn't where Harrison stopped. Harrison was recently awarded by Yountville Little League for his continued support, involvement, and leadership, running baseball clinics and coaching for youth in his community. In addition to baseball, Harrison throws discus and runs track for Vintage. He is involved in the Enough Club and the Key Club, and he also finds time to work at Parks and Rec. Harrison has applied to MIT, UC Berkeley, and Cal Poly with the intent of pursuing mechanical engineering. My intention for Harrison as his principal is for him to continue to explore the world of food. Harrison admitted to me that he's always been a picky eater, but he really surprised me when he admitted that he tried his first-ever cheeseburger last summer. Yikes. Harrison, I can't wait to see what you think of enchiladas or eggs benedict, and of course, I can't wait to see what amazing things you do for our world and in your future. I present to you Harrison Wright.
You can unmute Harrison.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Good evening, Dr. Masetti, the NVUSD Board of Education, Napa Valley Education Foundation, and all of the members of the audience today. I am deeply honored to be here and receive the Student of the Month Award. I've had the pleasure of having some amazing teachers throughout my school experience, and I appreciate everything they've done to help me to where I am today. I'd like to, three who have made the most impact on my learning. First, I'd like to acknowledge Keith Wechler. He was my seventh and eighth grade advisor at River School, as well as my world and US history teacher. During those years, we developed a great bond primarily over our shared love of Star Wars. This bond, as well as his immense care for his students, made it fun and exciting for me to show up to his classes. He is one of the most compassionate teachers I've ever had, and I'm very thankful for his effort to prepare me for high school in more ways than one. He was big on organization, good study habits, and purposeful note-taking. These were huge takeaways from his class, and they were extremely helpful skills to have throughout my high school experience that I'll carry into the rest of my life. Secondly, I would like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Broshard. He has been my teacher for three different classes while at Vintage. These classes were robotics as a freshman, AP Computer Science as a sophomore, and AP Physics when I was a junior. Mr. Broshard made these difficult classes very fun and intriguing with his dedicated approach to teaching. He's also one of the most devoted teachers that I've ever had. He has given countless hours to help me study during study hours to prepare for his senior AP exams. His expertise in a variety of subjects, as well as his engineering background, have really influenced my career path to study mechanical engineering. Finally, I would like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Merkner. He was my honors pre-calculus teacher last year as a junior. Last year, after switching to remote learning due to the pandemic, I appreciated the office hours that he offered for help via Google Meets. These meetings were extremely helpful, and it really helped me learn the material, even though the learning circumstances were very difficult. I'm grateful for all those hours he invested in teaching my classmates and me. And obviously, I can't end this without acknowledging my mom, who is also a teacher, and my dad for all the things that they have done for me throughout my years. Thank you again, everyone, for having me here tonight.
All right. Thank you, Harrison. Vintage's Board Student of the Month for the month of December is Vanessa Chen. Audience members, Vanessa's resume is six pages long. Vanessa is the most involved and awarded student I have ever encountered, which is impressive in and of itself. But what truly causes pause is when you meet or connect with Vanessa, you would never suspect that she is a true force of achievement across the board. Vanessa is highly accomplished but humble, exceedingly busy but never pressed for time or frazzled. She's driven to be involved without ever being pushy. During Vanessa's four years at high school, she's earned a 4.55 GPA. She cleared AP Physics BC as a 10th grader. She plays the flute in the concert band, the bass drum in percussion, the piano in the jazz ensemble. Outside of school, Vanessa earned Eagle Rank in Boy Scouts of America and the Golden Award in Girl Scouts, also while working as an astrophysics intern at UC Santa Cruz. In Vanessa's spare time, she participated in Spanish immersion in Spain, developed a passion for photography, and was awarded Youth of the Year by the Heart of Napa for her significant volunteer service to the community. I am very proud to share, but not surprised at all, that Vanessa was recently admitted to Stanford. She's still deciding where she will ultimately accept, but she is planning on double majoring in math and physics with the hope of someday working for NASA as an astrophysicist. Oh, yeah, and Vanessa also snow camps in sub-zero temperatures. I'm pretty sure there's nothing that she can't face. I present to you Vanessa Chen.
Good evening, Dr. Masetti, NVUSD Board of Education members, Napa Valley Education Foundation, and other members of the audience this evening. Throughout my K-12 education, Brendan Galvin, James Sittler, Caitlin Estadio, and Jennifer Lamont have influenced my life and helped me become the person I am today. Mr. Galvin has been my teacher for multiple instrumental music classes the past four years. If there's one thing that he's taught me, it would be to pursue my dreams and to never give up. Every experience I had in band has helped me grow as a person and made me discover more about myself. Challenging myself every day during band camp, after-school rehearsals, and competitions, I built up my perseverance and self-confidence. Not only is Mr. Galvin an outstanding teacher and role model, he brings hope to everyone who steps foot in the band room, my home away from home. When I first started high school, I took my first class, my first test, the Mr. Sittler's class. Although I had a hard time fitting in at first, I really appreciate Mr. Sittler's passion for mathematics. Despite learning difficult material, having a teacher that truly cares about their subject makes a world of a difference. I'm so thankful for his challenging classes and constant support, as well as his amazing life lessons as I progressed through high school. Thanks to Mr. Sittler, my passion has only grown, and I plan to pursue a future in mathematics. Mrs. Estadio is by far one of the coolest vice principals I've ever met. She is always enthusiastic and smiling whenever I see her around campus. Her constant support for me throughout high school helped me to win a community service award, providing me with all the funds I needed to complete my Eagle Scout project during the pandemic, which means more to me than I could ever express in words. I have no doubts when I say that Mrs. Estadio's enthusiasm and support is unparalleled to many and made a difference in my life. Mrs. Lamont is an amazing English teacher that has offered me limitless opportunities from the Napa Valley Writers Contest to the Justino West Writing Contest. Without her support and encouragement, I would never have co-authored a short story titled Genesis with my best friend or written my own poem on desolation wilderness. Not only has she given her students so many opportunities, her class is truly challenging and interesting. I've learned so much from her and the assignments that she creates. Mrs. Lamont has helped me explore the creative writing side of myself, and I really appreciate her never-ending support. I would like to thank Mr. Galvin, Mrs. Sittler, Mrs. Estadio, and Mrs. Lamont for challenging me, supporting me, and helping me become the person I am today. I would like to thank Mr. Galvin, Mrs. Sittler, Mrs. Estadio, and Mrs. Lamont for challenging me, supporting me, and helping me become the person I am today. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Principal O'Connor, and to the Vintage High School Students of the Month for November and December, Harrison Wright and Vanessa Chen. Congratulations. We are now going on to item G of our agenda, which is public comments on non-agenda items. Members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during this section of the agenda inasmuch as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Reese, do we have any public comment?
President Gonzalez-Morris, we do have a public comment. We'll start with TG.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Ty Gaskins. I'm the parent of a ninth grader at ACHS and a seventh grader at ACMS. Tonight, I would like to share a statement as Vice President of the PTO at ACMS. On behalf of the students, parents, and school community at ACMS, we would like to extend our appreciation to Dr. Musetti during what has been a very difficult two years for families in American Canyon schools. Through the challenges, we applaud your dedication and hard work and appreciate your transparency. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit emotional. Your inclusiveness and communication level, which have made it possible for American Canyon students and families to feel like a vital part of the district. As you face your health challenge, the students and families of American Canyon will keep you in our thoughts, our prayers, and we wish you a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gaskins. I really, really appreciate that heartfelt message from the families in American Canyon Middle School. It means the world to me. So thank you for taking the time this evening, for that expression of kindness. It means a lot. So thank you.
That concludes public comment at this time. President Gonzalez-Morris.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reese.
President Gonzalez-Morris, I need to report from the public comments that were submitted or not, as the case may be before the meeting.
Perfect. Yes, thank you for that reminder, Trist- Tristee Gracia. Do you have any public comment that was submitted online?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before the board meeting.
Appreciate that. Takes a team. Thank you, Tristee Gracia. We're moving on to item H with Board of Education and Student Board Representative Reports. We'll start with our Student Board Rep, Carla McGaughan.
Happy to be here tonight. Um, I think students are excited to get back in, in class full-time, or for the most part, four out of the five days. I hear a lot of students talking about switching from online to in-person, so that's pretty exciting. And I also want to wish everybody a happy Black History Month. Napa's black population is not the largest, of course, but I think it's still important to recognize and still take the time to wish you all a happy Black History Month, because although it is a small percentage, representation matters. So that's all for me.
I attended the FNT meeting on the ninth, the Middle School Task Force on the ninth, the staff town hall meeting regarding the Phase 3 reopening on the 10th, and the parent town hall meeting regarding Phase 3 reopening also on the 10th. That's all I have.
I attended the COVID-19 vaccination webinar hosted by Lorenzo Smith. The webinar highlighted legal, practical, and policy considerations, including medical and religious duty-to-bargain negotiable impacts, agreements with outside providers, liability considerations in administering, and record-keeping, which, after that, I have to say, I continue to have a great deal of respect for Ms. Page and her team. I enjoyed the KQED story about NVUSD's reopening for in-person learning. More positive press validating NVUSD's leadership role in the reopening process. Please peruse your parent NVUSD newsletter for all the positive press we have received to date. There are links. I attended the Facilities and Technology Committee meeting, the Middle School Redesign Task Force. Just a comment to the thousands of viewers that are listening, there is a community forum for public comment on Monday, March 8th at 6:00 PM. Please find the link in the parent newsletter as well as on the website. And I too attended the NVUSD All Staff Forum Phase 3 Transition and the Community Parent Town Hall Phase 3 Transition Meetings. And that is, that concludes.
So last week, I attended two full days of the California School Board Association's new trustee institute. On February 2nd, we're to a session on effective governance and then student learning, and the second full day was focused on human resources and school finance. So a lot of information percolating in my brain right now. On February 2nd, that evening, I also attended, along with trustee Chu, the American Canyon Middle School African-American Coalition meeting. And the Coalition is a group of administrators, teachers, and parents from ACMS whose goal is to grow the school's capacity to serve their African-American students. I was really grateful to learn about it and be able to be a part of it, and just really impressed with the, the focus and the discussion of priorities and the focus on data, and just that there is a forum and an avenue for people to come and discuss their concerns and their, and their hopes for, for that population of students. On February 4th, I had a virtual meeting with American Canyon City Councilman Pierre Washington as a way to get acquainted and, and build our working relationship. A quick, little, nice, small-world thing there is, I, I knew this going into the meeting because of Facebook tells you everything. But his son-in-law was my third-grade student in 2000. So that was a nice connection. And I try not to dwell on the fact that Emmanuel is now a married father of two, because it would make me feel very old, so I don't think about that. But that was a nice introductory meeting we had. On the 5th, I was able, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to report this, but I did have a really informative discussion with Mr. Mongualla and Mr. Abud, who graciously gave me their time, a little bit of their time, so I could ask some questions and learn about the online assessment platform that we use and some other issues about data collection, especially during distance learning. So I'm really appreciative of their time and their sharing their knowledge with me. I also attended the second Middle School Redesign Task Force meeting on the 9th. And we'll just quickly say, I think that the transparent transparency and the structure is really allowing the stakeholders to focus on the key data. Everyone's looking at the same numbers. They, this meeting looked at enrollment and demographics and facilities. And I just really, and, and it was nice to see the stakeholders engaging and kind of unpacking all that information and what it means in our decision-making process. So I'm just really impressed with that forum. On the 10th, uh, yesterday, that was, I also attended the, both the Staff Town Hall and the Parent Forum for the Phase 3 reentering. So again, props for positive, transparent engagement with the community. I really think that builds trust and relationship, and I'm so glad that we do it so well here in our district. This morning, along with trustee Chu, I attended the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce meeting. We updated the attendees about the hybrid learning and the transition to Phase 3. And then we also took the opportunity to remind those attendees that our district does allow inter-district transfers for those parents who might work within the district but not live in, within the bounds of the district. Sort of explained that that was something that could really boost our enrollment, and we're hoping that that might bear some, some boost in enrollment. And that concludes my report.
Well, um, it seems as if we were all at the same Zoom meetings this week, so, that I enjoyed very much. And although I have this tendency to wake up at 3:00 in the morning and think I've missed a meeting, you know, and, no, no, it's, it's, it's COVID brain. And last, and I did have some fun last weekend. I did the, I did the American Canyon Choir Crab Feed. And the, it there, it's the Crab-tastic Feed, they call it, and I drove by and picked up my crab, which was actually, it was extraordinarily delicious. It was quite good and cooked perfectly. And they told me that they had, it had been a very successful event. They'd made as much money as last year. People really pitched in, you know, and supported it. It was great. And I was, you know, happy to hear that. And I didn't have any committee meetings, although I'm looking forward to one next week.
Hi, everyone. So I had a busy two weeks. Like trustee Rizer said, we attended the ACMS African-American Coalition led by Assistant Principal Bobby Ruth. It was wonderful and got to really understand some of the issues that they're working on. And as part of Black History Month, I invite you guys to view the video, the wonderful video that ACMS has put out. Interviewed, or actually, me and trustee Rizer participated in making that video created by the ACMS team for Black History Month, and it was a speech of Martin Luther King. So hopefully, I'll, I'll share that with the board. I also attended the Middle School Redesign Task Force meetings on the 2nd and the 9th. And I actually got to visit schools, which is wonderful, because it's a little bit weird not to have stepped onto some of these campuses when I started this job. So on February 2nd, I got to visit with American Canyon High School with Principal Crystal Lopez. February 4th, I visited Donaldson Way with Principal Marilyn Avalon. On February 8th, I visited Napa Junction with Principal Norrie Montgomery. And I actually got to go and see the classrooms and how the kids were awesomely engaged and very, very happy to be in the classroom and being with each other, even though they're six feet apart. And I also attended the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee this morning and the Phase 3 Forum for Teachers and Town Hall for Parents yesterday. And right before this meeting, I was at the Cannon Oaks School Site Council meeting, which I think we will talk about later when we talk about their transition to Title I. Oh, and one more thing, a personal note. Today happens to be the last day of the Lunar New Year, so we're saying goodbye to the Year of the Rat. And tomorrow is the Year of the Ox, so Happy New Year. And for all of those American Canyon students who are taking Mandarin, Xin Yan Kuai Lu.
I will follow that up. Thank you. I, like trustee Water, am feeling like we went to a lot of the same Zoom meetings. I went to the Facilities and Technology Committee meeting on Tuesday, as well as the Middle School Task Force, which I, I really loved observing, you know, echoing trustee Rizer's comments. I think the process is one that, that, you know, inspires a lot of confidence in whatever kind of work product results from it. I think we will, we, we can be confident that it's been through a rigorous and meaningful review. So I'm, I'm looking forward to observing more of that work and, and seeing how that process plays out. I also attended the, the Staff Forum yesterday. I couldn't attend the parent one, but the staff one I was able to make. And I appreciated the, again, the thoughtfulness that the, the staff brought, you know, raising concerns and, and addressing issues that, that they have, as well as the very meaningful responses that, that the district was able to provide in that, that conversation. So, um, and, yeah, that, that's about it for me. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Let's go on to Board Representatives Reports. So we'll start with Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
We have not yet met. We will meet next week.
Great. Thank you. Facilities and Technology Committee.
We did meet. There's no report from the Technology Division. The Facilities discussion center on how contingencies are set on projects. And as a reminder, we updated our implementation plan in December. It's used as a project template for budget allocation and funding purposes. Each project is an allocation within each allocation of that subject. Contingencies are part of that subject, so it's critical to understand in the change order process as well for budget allocation.
The types of contingencies, there's in-contract allowances for work that are, you know, hard to quantify, such as dry rot. Then contractor contingencies, which address, obviously, contractor and design issues. And then there's out-of-contract. Would-be owner contingencies, as I listed above, are carried in the project budget and then transferred to the contractor via a change order. This mechanism also allows for offsetting change orders that fall outside the contract. How are the contingency amounts determined? Well, in-contract, we use a partnering approach with lease-leaseback and design-build. Those allowances are determined by scope of work, size of project, and the facility itself. And then contingency is again broken down by contractor contingency determined by the contractor and their assessment of the work, and again, by owner contingency, which is collaborative between the contractor and the owner. Out-of-contract, it's dependent upon the in-coctor, in-contract allowances and those contingencies for, again, lease-leaseback and design-build projects. Modernization contingencies run about a 10% to 20%, depending on scope of work and facility knowledge. New construction seems to be around 5% to 12%, as you aren't dealing with issues from an actual pre-existing project, of course, unless you run into soil issues, and the size of the project. Smaller projects have bigger percentages, kind of economies of scale. One is you can skyrocket your contingency very easily, as Kelly Jurgensen has aptly stated many times, it can get artificially high. So we reviewed some specific examples, discussed the use of escalation costs, whole-project costs. We reviews, reviewed the types of allocations, single project, which is one allocation, one budget, one set of contingencies, and then multi-phase projects, where you have multiple budgets balancing to the individual phase budget with contingencies, and then rolling it to the next phase. Rule of thumb, 70% construction, 30% contingencies, consultants, and everybody else involved in the project. And as we wrapped up with some modifications to our rates for those youth nonprofits interested in leasing our fields. We had released our fee structure prior to COVID, but many nonprofit budgets had been set, and they had based their budgets on previous rates. Mr. Pearson held a meeting on February 4th, and we adjusted our field rates from now until the end of the year. They run on a fiscal year, not a calendar year, so July 1st, we will recalibrate to our current fee structure. As we stated in previous facilities reports, we don't receive any funding to improve our fields. We can, we only charge about 50% of our direct costs back to the community. We want to reiterate that we appreciate the partnerships we have formed, and we look forward to seeing our youth back on the fields. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jenkweck. We now move on to Finance Committee. We have not met. Now we go on to Policy Committee.
That was, we reported out last, last meeting.
Yep. That, you can remind us again how many pages. Trustee Water, 170 or so. Now we're going on to Special Education, Community Advisory Committee. Trustee Rizer.
We have not met.
City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives.
We have not met.
City of Napa Liaison Representatives.
Looking forward to our next meeting.
Great. Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives.
We have not yet met.
Great. Thank you. We now move on to Superintendent and Executive Staff, Dr. Musetti.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, families, and community members. I want to start out by thanking those NVUSD employees and NVUSD parents who joined us for our staff and community town halls yesterday that so many of the trustees attended and made note of. At this point, I think with such engaged board members, I'm going to have to cut my superintendent report short because they're getting covered by a board member, so I really appreciate that. It was really great to host hundreds of participants at each event as NVUSD prepares for this next transition to Phase Three in our reopening schools framework that we shared with the community and the board last July. The four-phased framework developed by our reopening task force this summer served us well in navigating the unpredictable circumstances caused by COVID-19. And as trustees have mentioned, we continue to be a state leader in reopening schools, kindergarten through 12th grade. I also want to thank the 51 participants on our Middle School Redesign Task Force that many of the trustees also mentioned. We've hosted two of our six meetings for our Middle School Redesign Task Force. Ms. Dana Page and Ms. Sarah Knox have done an excellent job facilitating the first two sessions. It's not easy in a group of 51 as we build shared content about enrollment, financial impacts, facilities, capacity, and capital improvement costs at the middle school level. I want to thank Mr. Manguala and Mr. Pearson for their detailed presentations that were filled with lots of data for us as a task force to consume as we approach the challenging, complex decisions around school consolidation and closure. Our third session is scheduled for this Tuesday, February 16th at 6:00 PM. I want to announce that because, you know, we are really wanting to encourage engagement around this process. Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings and her team, along with our dual-language immersion principals, will be the lead presenters of the upcoming session. The task force will learn about middle school student performance data, middle school programs across school sites, and the K-12 Dual Language Immersion Program. Please remember, all task force meetings are accessible to the public for viewing, again, wanting to encourage engagement and participation from our community. At our fourth session on March 2nd, the task force will consider and evaluate middle school closure consolidation scenarios against the four criterion that we have established. The four criteria are program excellence, fiscal solvency and sustainability, responsible facilities management, and finally, equity. In order to provide the broader community an opportunity to give input at the, I'm sorry, to give input on the closure consolidation plans, the district has also scheduled two community town halls that I think Trustee Jenkewitz mentioned. I'll repeat them. Monday, March 8th at 6:00, and we'll have a community town hall in English with Interpretation Services. And on Tuesday, March 9th at 6:00 PM, we're going to dedicate a community town hall to our Spanish-speaking families. If you're interested in this topic as a current elementary parent, a current middle school parent, or even a high school parent who already went through the middle school years and system, we really, really do encourage you to consider attending. This is an NVUSD community issue. Please see all the materials and future dates at NVUSD.org. As a reminder, my staff and I will be bringing forth a recommendation to the school board for a closure consolidation plan at an upcoming special board meeting that will be scheduled sometime later this spring. And this is a non-negotiable, given our financial circumstances, the declining enrollment that we're facing as a district. And so we are seeking that community input along the way. So please take advantage of the opportunities we're presenting. Lastly, I would also like to take a brief moment to express my deep gratitude for my NVUSD family. And when I say NVUSD family, I mean family. That's from the board sitting in front of you tonight, to my team, to all of the NVUSD staff, the parents, community members, like our ACMS parent who spoke tonight. You've all shown me so much compassion, support, and understanding as I shared and have begun to face my current health challenge over the last couple of weeks. I received hundreds of emails from staff and from family, community, and it has been incredibly humbling and it has filled me with tremendous gratitude that I get to serve as a superintendent of schools in such a special, amazing community. My board, as President Eva Gonzalez-Mares stated, is wearing pink tonight in solidarity with me. It's these expressions of kindness and care that make the NVUSD community one of the most special places to serve and to work. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead, and thank you for supporting me as I lead through this personal challenge. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my amazing team of assistant superintendents who are going to report out around the work that's happening in their respective areas that they oversee. We'll start out with Mr. Rob Manguala, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Mercedes. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Later tonight, Dr. Peter Abud will be presenting the results of our online STAR assessments for both the winter and the fall. I wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Abud and the data team, Bebron, Kim Kyle, and Sage Bauer for the incredible work they have done to set this up and support teachers. I also wanted to commend the teachers for their incredible work and support administering a district-wide online assessment in reading, math, and early literacy on a K-12 basis during a pandemic is truly an incredible accomplishment. This cannot be understated. The goal for the participation rate for this, for this year for these assessments was 80%. All grade level spans and assessments exceeded this goal. Most were actually in the low to mid 90s. We look forward to providing regular updates on these assessments and questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. Next, I invite Ms. Dana Page, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, to report out.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board of Trustees, Student Board Representative, and Dr. Mercedes. We are happy to announce that NVUSD is again participating for the third year in the Classified Summer Assistance Program. The Summer Assistance Program is a grant that's offered from the California Department of Education to give funds to participating classified school employees who withhold some of their earnings during the school year in order to receive a summer check, which normally these employees who must be less than 12-month employees to be eligible may not normally get. The grant provides funding to match the amount the employee sets aside of their own earnings up to 100%. The actual amount depends on how many other districts and employees ultimately choose to participate. The first year the CDE offered this, NVUSD was one of the few districts who actually pursued this opportunity, which meant we were able to secure a 100% match and provide extra money to 185 of our lowest-paid employees without any additional cost to the district in the amount of about $291,000. The second year, we participated, a few more districts actually did take advantage. So the match was less, but still 254 employees will receive an additional 60% on the money that they set aside, which is a phenomenal rate of return on their investment. We currently are accepting applications for Year Three, and we encourage our classified employees for less than 12 months and make $62,400 or less annually to sign up through Cheryl Anderson or Elizabeth Gonzalez by March 1st. We can't guarantee what the percent will be, but we would predict that it will be better than the interest rate you're going to get at the bank. I would also like to invite you to check out our third staff spotlight. This time, we feature Suhal Qasis from the Maintenance Department. Suhal is a longtime NVUSD employee who began as a bus driver and worked his way up to his current position as a Maintenance Specialist III carpenter. He is the epitome of always willing to lend a hand and do what it takes to get the job done. And he has some great insights to share in the spotlight, which appeared in this week's employee newsletter and on the website. As always, anyone can nominate an extraordinary NVUSD employee. Just email their name and a brief statement about why you selected them. Send your submissions to hr@nvusd.org. And finally, we are in full swing with twice-per-month COVID-19 surveillance testing. And today, we set a new NVUSD record. We administered 576 tests in a single day throughout the district. So great job to Gina DeLuca, her team, and all of the site testing folks out there who did an excellent job. And thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Love that new goal to practice around staff highlights the spotlight. It's great. So thank you so much. Okay, next, we're going to hear from Mr. Mike Pearson, our Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services.
Good evening, President Mars Gonzalez, NBC Board of Education Chair, CEO, Stock and Mercedes, and members of the NVUSD community. I'm excited not to go last this time. I usually go last. Thank you for the opportunity to provide each of you with an update on operational services. As I do with most of my reports, my focus will center on the Street and NVUSD Strategic Plan Number Four. Tonight, my comments will center on maintenance and grounds, service and supply, custodial, food service, and facilities. In maintenance and grounds, I want to acknowledge the leadership of the Director, Mr. Albert de Souza, and the Head of Shop, specifically Dave Gevis, Hector Gallegos, Tico Lara, and Brian Bassinet. These individuals have been doing a stellar job motivating, monitoring, and inspiring the employees in the shops they oversee to make sure our classrooms and buildings are operating at all times. In service and supply, there are two individuals, Brian Knotten and Gabriel Perez, who worked tirelessly to keep the school sites supplied with all the necessary PPE required at each school site, along with delivering and picking up a multitude of items from each site. Additionally, both Brian and Gabriel have been responsible for receiving, organizing, and distributing PPE received from the state of California for the other districts in Napa County. In custodial, Gloria Aguirre continues to demonstrate excellent leadership supervising close to 100 custodians who are extremely conscientious with their daily and nighttime cleaning duties. There's not one individual who does not understand the importance he or she plays every day during the pandemic. In food service, our new foods, our new Director of Food Service, Kristen Teckel, and the amazing, and I mean amazing, food service staff continue to make great strides with providing NVUSD students and families with nutritious meals. Recently, changes to the menus have been received well. Offerings include a cheesy pasta bake kit featuring organic ground beef from Mindful Meats in Petaluma, fresh baked cinnamon bread and bagels from Bonomi Bakery in Pittsburgh, California, and plenty of California-grown fresh vegetables such as romaine lettuce, zucchini, and cucumbers. These meal kits would not be possible without the dedication and perseverance demonstrated by the food service staff who assemble, package, and deliver the kits. Speaking of delivery, food service and transportation, plus some school site campus supervisors continue to collaborate every Wednesday by delivering 600 meals to students who live throughout Napa County as part of our home-delivered meal program. Meal counts continue to hold steady when compared to previous years. In fact, they're actually better. In December of 2019, we had 101,000, almost 11,000. In December of 2020, we had 157,000 meal counts, which is an increase of about 45,000. And in January of 2020, we had meal counts of a little, almost 106,000. And in January of 2021, we had over 141,000 meals, which is an increase of a little bit over 35,000. So they're doing a great job. And then finally, in facilities, as mentioned earlier, a Zoom meeting was held on Thursday, February 4th, with many of our external users, mainly youth sports organizations who have previously rented our facilities. During a meeting, staff reviewed with the attendees guidelines from the California Department of Public Health and NVUSD on the use of our facilities. We are targeting March 1, when outside, you just can start to rent and use our facilities, provided each user complies with several requirements. We are very excited with the turnout at the meeting and are eager to allow our youth organizations the use of our facilities. And this concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. We want to keep you on your toes, so we didn't want you to go last today. So thanks for all that great data around food services. Last and certainly not least, Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings, our Assistant Superintendent in the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board Trustees, Dr. Mercedes, and Student Representative Magaña. Next week, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Steering Committee will convene to begin their work. I wanted to appreciate the 12 staff members who have agreed to be a part of this work. They will be working and reviewing the data that was gathered in December from the surveys, as well as the information from the focus groups that recently concluded. The Instructional Services Division continues to prepare for Professional Development Day on March 11. More about the day will be previewed at the Curriculum and Student Services Committee meeting next week. Again, I'd like to invite you to our February Authors Night on February 23rd with Latinx author Pablo Cartea. He will be joined by NVLA's sixth-grade teacher Franklin Hernandez as a co-host. I hope you can join us for another engaging night. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge and celebrate Black History Month with a quote from Martin Luther King about the purpose of education. He stated that "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." Intelligence plus character, that is the true goal. That is the goal of true education. I believe that that is what NVUSD strives to do each and every day with our students. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That concludes our executive team's report. President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Dr. Mercedes, and thank you to the team. We will now move on to our Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by the board members.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Water. Mr. Reese, do I have any public comment on the consent agenda?
There are no public comments for consent agenda items, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
President Gonzalez-Mares, this needs to be a roll call.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. He's on check right now today. He's more on it than I am. Yes, we will do roll call. We have a first and a second. Vera, please.
Yes, Student Board Member Magaña.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jenkewitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Okay, we are now going to Presentations and Discussion Items. This is item J1 with Business Services. And J1A with STAR Assessment Growth Data. See, they're loading the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me and see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Trustees, and Dr. Mercedes, and Student Representative Magaña. My name is Peter Abud, and I am the Director of Data and Assessment Services. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community on the STAR assessments, which were approved by the school board at the start of the school year. The content of tonight's presentation falls under our Strategic Plan Goal Number One, Student Learning Achievement and Access. Specifically, it falls under the College and Career Readiness Initiative and the tactic describing the development of a robust and balanced assessment system. As a reminder, the STAR Assessment Suite provides quick, computer-adaptive assessments in math, reading, and early literacy. Unlike previously used district assessments, STAR provides much more than a simple lexile or a quantile score. Teachers are able to access multiple reports that provide skill scores, grade-level equivalence, growth scores, and specific domains and skills that the whole class or individual students may need support with. The online assessments integrate into Clever, our single sign-on system, making the assessments easily accessible by students and teachers, whether they are at home or physically at school. I'd like to take a moment and define some important terms before we start looking at results tonight. Students who take a STAR assessment are given a skill score based on the number of questions answered correctly and the difficulty of those questions. The score on a scale of 0 to 1,400 compares student progress over time and across grade levels. Students are also given a percentile rank indicating the percentage of students nationally who obtain scores equal or lower than that of the particular student. For example, a student in the 35th percentile in STAR reading performs better than 35% of students nationally in the same grade level as that student who took the assessment at that same time of year. Renaissance Learning categorizes students based on their percentile rank. Students who score better than 40% of students nationally in their grade level at that time of the school year are considered at or above benchmark. These are the students whose results are in green on the sample reports. They're on the top left. Students who score between the 25th and 39th percentile are considered on watch and close to meeting benchmark. These are in blue. Students who score between the 10th and 24th percentile are considered in need of intervention. These are in yellow. While those who scored below the 10th percentile are in need of urgent intervention and can be seen in red. Keep in mind that Renaissance expects students to earn a higher and higher scale score as they progress through the school year. For example, a third grader in the 40th percentile at the start of the school year needs to score a 482 scale score in STAR Math. That same student taking the test in the winter would need to score a 523, an increase of 41 points in order to remain at the 40th percentile. Before we look at participation and proficiency rates, I'd like to remind us that assessments during this unique pandemic have been challenging. In the fall, the assessment was new to both students and teachers, and all students were taking the assessment from home without the support and supervision of a teacher. Our youngest students in particular struggled with use of the technology. Renaissance's assessments are designed to be completed with little support from adults, but it was still a challenge. The winter screening window was a little easier on our students and teachers, as this was the second time they had taken on our students and teachers, as this was the second time they had taken the assessment. And about a quarter of our students took the assessment at school instead of at home since we were in phase two of our reopening plan. These are the participation rates for STAR Early Literacy and STAR Reading. Our participation rate target, as Mr. Manguala mentioned earlier, for the fall and winter was 80%, which all of our schools exceeded. I'd also like to take a moment and celebrate the incredibly high participation rates in spite of the challenges we've been facing in the COVID pandemic. I know it took a strong commitment from our teachers and site leaders to reach such a high participation rate. These are the participation rates for the STAR Math Assessment, also exceeding that 80% target. And here you can see the percentage of students by grade level for the elementary grades, who are considered at or above benchmark in the 40th percentile or above for both the fall and winter test administrations. Again, remember that students need a higher scale score as the school year goes on in order to maintain the percentile rank. If you see a drop between fall and winter, it may mean that students grew in their learning, but that it simply wasn't enough to maintain the percentile rank from the fall. I'll illustrate this with an example from second grade. Our average second grade STAR reading score from the fall was 172, while the average score in the winter was 203. Our average second grader grew 31 points, but fell short of the approximately 40 points that a second grader needs to grow in order to maintain their percentile rank. These are the STAR proficiency comparisons for middle school. And these are for high school. We now switch over to the STAR Math Test. These are the elementary proficiency comparisons. These are for the middle schools. And the high schools. We continue to move forward with administering the STAR assessments and supporting and training teachers and administrators in using the data. We will have one more screening window in May for all students, although some teachers, especially our interventionists, are administering the assessments more often to measure progress. Last week, we trained all of our site principals in looking at STAR growth data, and some have already scheduled trainings for their own teachers to explore the topic. We've also scheduled a total of six STAR sessions for our March 12 Professional Learning Day, tailored specifically for elementary and secondary teachers, and included both introductory and intermediate sessions. Next week, we'll be training special education case carriers in using STAR assessments as part of IEP goal development, and we continue to work with our MTSS teams to incorporate STAR data into identifying and serving students who need additional support. Thank you, and I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. We'll start with questions.
Yeah, I have quite a bit to say actually on this topic, but I wanted to start just by highlighting how important and somewhat historic this presentation is. We've never before had an opportunity to review data of the current school year to see how we're doing during the year. In the past, relied only on the dashboard end-of-year reports, which didn't arrive until halfway through the following school year. As a board member, I never want to return to a time when we don't have an assessment tool that gives us consistent data on all of our K-12 students. I also want to highlight that this testing software works on all grade levels and allows an apples-to-apples comparison that, again, was not previously available to the district. As great as it is to have this data, I find that the data itself is alarming. The first data point I would like to highlight is on the slide that is called Early Literacy and Reading Proficiency Comparison. If you could go to that slide for me?
Sure. One moment.
Can you share your screen again, Dr. Abud?
Yes, sorry. One moment. I think I may have lost the presentation. Bring it right back up. And I'm sorry, trustee Gracia, which slide did you want me to return to?
Yes, it's the Early Literacy Reading Proficiency Comparison for K6.
Of this one, yes.
Yes, thank you. We can see that in each K2 grade has a decline from the fall to winter. While it's very concerning to see our students are regressing instead of improving during the school year, this might be explained by the COVID-19 and distance learning, along with other trends. But there are other things on this slide that are more concerning and cannot be explained away by the pandemic. I want to focus on the part of this slide, which is the consistent grade-to-grade decline in proficiency. By fifth grade, our students have dropped to the 37th percentile in proficiency, which then becomes the new baseline for the remainder of our students' secondary education. If you could advance two slides for me? As seen on this slide, we are graduating high school seniors, only 37% of whom are proficient at reading. This is not okay. We must do a better job across the board in educating our students in reading and writing. From the data presented tonight, it appears that the problem stems from deficiencies which begin in elementary with our proficiency bottoming out in the fifth grade. It looks like students that never recovered from this deficiency and graduate with roughly the same proficiency numbers as are established in fifth grade. I am quite confident that a major source of our difficulty stems from the curriculum. The curriculum in elementary and middle school must change. We can no longer afford to solely rely on Benchmark and StudySync to provide material for instruction to our students in English Language Arts. These programs simply aren't delivering the results we need. We have years of failed results with these programs that aptly demonstrate that they aren't working. Excerpts and reading strategies are not effective tools to prepare our students to be proficient readers. We can teach them strategies until they are blue in the face, but it isn't going to help them to be better readers. What is going to help them be better readers is reintroducing books to the classroom and helping to ignite a passion of reading in our students. I would like to see the Curriculum Committee discuss a future resolution requiring that every year, every student, as part of the core curriculum, read four-class novels with a strong encouragement to read more than four-class novels each year. I see this as merely a starting place to return our students to reading proficiency, but it isn't the whole solution. Much more needs to be done, and I'm looking to hear more on how staff anticipates we can improve our English Language Arts instruction. I strongly believe a reading task force is necessary and should be convened at this point. I am aware that my proposal will likely necessitate the purchase of a large quantity of new books for our classrooms and libraries. As a board member, I am prepared to support such an expenditure, as I see it as vital to improving our English Language Arts scores. I want to be clear that when I say I support the purchase of books, I do not mean digital books. I am interested in purchasing physical media that students can hold in their hands and that are not taken offline by a PSPS event. Mr. Manguala, as second interim approaches and you begin to focus on future budgets, please take note that there is likely to be a significant ask for book purchases in the very near future. We will need to find a way to fund that request despite the financial difficulties we are facing. I would like to transition now from reading to talk about math and some of the data that I find particularly interesting. Because we're no longer relying on the end-of-year assessments, which were only given third through 12th graders, we actually have information how our first and second graders are performing. Thank you, by the way, for moving to the math slide. If you look at the slide, you can see there's a proverbial falling off the cliff of math proficiency for students between first and second grade, from which they never recover. Thankfully, the math scores don't drop nearly as far as reading and writing, but we still bottom out in the low 50s proficiency-wise. I'm not sure if this is due to the greater focus we have been putting on math since starting the math task force, but I would like to think that the floor in math is higher than English Language Arts due to the added attention in this area. And then could you move forward another two slides? Thank you. As you can see on this slide, the numbers are still not good. We are graduating seniors, only 52% of whom are proficient in math, but that is significantly better than 37% that are proficient in English Language Arts. I know that COVID-19, combined with our financial issues, has slowed down our ability to dedicate time and resources to these tasks, but we must continue to make student achievement a priority. Our students deserve English Language Arts and Math curriculum that is successful for them and will give them the tools they need to succeed in life. We are not at a level of proficiency that I find to be acceptable, and we have a lot of work to do in order to move the needle in a positive direction. Next, I would like to talk about the Priorities and Data Collection Task Force. By now, you likely know how much I appreciate a well-planned and well-executed rollout of new programs. I value taking the time to build lots of buy-in from end-users, combined with a very thorough rollout of new programs and technology that is well-supported. So you may be surprised to hear me say that I think we should close down the Data Collection Task Force. I am not at all certain continuing the work of the task force, which will not reconvene until next school year anyway, is needed. We have a functional data collection and feedback tool that we are already using in the STAR system, and we will have been using it for over a year by the time the task force reconvenes. It was necessary, due to the pandemic, to quickly transition to the STAR program in order to facilitate the distance learning we have been doing this school year. It seems reasonable to continue to utilize the STAR system, which appears to have served us well this year. I suggest sticking with the STAR testing system for the next several years and reconvening the task force three or four years down the road to see if a switch in data collection programs needs to be made. I am loath to swap to a new system at this point due to the urgency I see around needing to act on the data that we have presently. I worry that if we don't keep STAR, we won't have year-to-year data that we can compare to draw even further inferences next year, and we will be pushing our acquisition of more relevant data two years down the road. If more steps need to be taken to more robustly implement STAR testing, then I'm in favor of those measures, but do not want to abandon the STAR program. I would also support an expansion of the use of STAR data to the extent it will help teachers and staff deliver improved programs for our students. I am also viewing shutting down other tasks, or shutting down this task force as necessary from an institutional capacity or bandwidth standpoint. As an institution, we have only so much bandwidth to deal with various issues facing our district. Some of our bandwidth is already dedicated to important tasks that cannot be changed, one of which is right-sizing our district so that we can remain fiscally solvent. I feel like the Data Collection Task Force is not only redundant, considering we have a functional program already, but will also take up too much of our bandwidth. I would like to prioritize the use of that bandwidth differently. I believe we should take the bandwidth that we would have been dedicated to the Data Collection Task Force and reassign it instead to improving student achievement by erecting a reading task force. As we are now reviewing task force that could be closed to increase institutional bandwidth, I can't help but notice the long-running and poorly delivering health task force. Further bandwidth could be gained by shutting down the health task force that has for three years produced no results. While I do appreciate the importance of health education and its importance to the lives of our students, its importance pales in comparison to reading. Reading is the foundational skill of all other learning. If students can't read, then it prevents them from pursuing all other knowledge. Arguing about whether or not we have a one semester class in high school or continue to include health instruction in PE isn't our highest priority, or at least shouldn't be after reviewing the results presented tonight. The significance of where and when health gets taught pales in comparison to the importance of enabling our students to read. We will do far more to improve our students' lives by instilling a love of reading and solving our English Language Arts crisis than any decision about when to teach health class could ever hope to accomplish. I am suggesting we close down the health task force for now and use the added bandwidth to focus on a reading task force. I am opening, I'm open to it returning in three to five years when we're in a better place with reading. Again, this is not about health instruction being unimportant, but rather is a discussion about priorities and where to focus the limited bandwidth available in the district. For me, improving these reading scores is a much larger priority than figuring out when it is optimal to deliver health instruction. In conclusion, I am left with a feeling that we are not doing enough to properly educate our children, and that frustrates me. I find these results to be unacceptable, and at a future meeting, we'll want to hear from staff a concrete plan to improve these results. I also believe a reprioritization needs to happen to create enough bandwidth so the three classic skills, and still most important, of reading, writing, and arithmetic can be elevated.
Not sure I want to go next.
President Gonzalez-Mares, before other trustees speak, can I just, for the record, just ask a couple clarifying questions of trustee Gracia? Before we move on, just so staff is clear. So trustee Gracia, thank you so much for your thoughtful, impactful, and thorough comments in response to our first, like you said, sort of historic presentation around a common assessment point in our district. We're really, really excited about that, particularly since many districts during the pandemic have abandoned the concept of assessment because they're too busy trying to even figure out how to open schools. It's an honor and a pleasure that we can bring to the school board this data for discussion during these extraordinary times. So thank you again for your thorough comments. I do want to just clarify and then just kind of get affirmation from trustee Gracia. We have not launched what you referred to as the Data Collection Task Force, and I understand using that as the identifier, we internally with staff would call it and have called it the Assessment Task Force, because we did talk about in our strategic plan, building a K-12 assessment framework, and I did hint to the board that we thought in order to do that well, assessment requires buy-in, and we wanted to establish an assessment task force, which trustee Gracia has referred to as the Data Collection Task Force. I do want trustee Gracia to know, along with the other board members, especially board members, especially after his comment, that we did not launch that task force this year because of bandwidth issues, and I just want everybody to know that. We did, like trustee Gracia said, decided to bring in STAR because we needed something particularly during this pandemic, and we did leverage the crisis as an opportunity to bring in this K-12 tool. So what I'm hearing trustee Gracia say is that, I just wanted to correct, we wouldn't be abandoning yet. What I'm hearing your request on the table or direction for staff is that you would hope that we wouldn't dedicate time to starting the Assessment Task Force even as early as next year. So do you want to affirm that for me, trustee Gracia, if I'm interpreting your comments correctly?
That is correct. The idea would be that our time next year would be better focused on directing a reading task force rather than beginning an assessment task force, since we've already got the assessment tool that theoretically the Assessment Task Force would be designed to pick.
Okay, great. I just wanted that clarity for staff. So thank you so much. I'm done for now. President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Dr. Musetti. I believe trustee Jankowicz is going to speak.
At this point, I don't need to reiterate the data on the slides. We all reviewed the same information, and my hope is that we, we all viewed it similarly, sim- similarly, God, I can't speak, and that is with some level of concern. My understanding is the benchmark used in the performance slide is a minimum performance level that needs to be met to achieve the grade-level performance goal, which makes the data even more concerning. Let's take reading, for example. There is a steady decline after first grade, a gentle increase into third grade, net of NVLA, another descent into sixth grade, not even going over the relevance there. You can't help but extrapolate that data point and then apply the implications, let's say, to secondary. If the focus on learning to read occurs in elementary, as I, you know, know it does in any course subject, the fundamentals are being taught, so interventions may not be as prevalent in the early stage. But the data begs the question, what are the interventions in middle school and high school for those students that cannot read? You can change content in math, let's say, but reading is a skill that if the students- but reading is a skill that if the student is not proficient, it can have devastating impact on the balance of learning and all subject matter. That being said, this is our first baseline. We are in the middle of a pandemic with no pre-pandemic data for comparative purposes, and I appreciate that. But this data shows me that we need to assess alignment, comprehension, retention, and ultimately, achievement. The benefit of this program is that it will provide us with one standard across K-12, will provide consistent data, a continuum, that through the nature of its structure will demand accountability and improvement. The critical question in my mind is, what do we do to change the data? I look forward to being informed of the plan we put in place and the execution strategy. The data will hold us accountable by virtue of the numbers. We have community values, education is certainly one of them. And as we address learning loss, mitigation techniques, and support strategies, we need to efficiently and effectively leverage the data to find solutions for our students. As we all know, achievement for NVUSD is a non-negotiable. I do have one question. Do we track roomies versus zoomies in Aries? Dr. Abud, do you know?
I do. Dr. Abud, are you there?
So do we use, is there learning disparity between those two approaches? And can that data help create targeted support programs?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question. Can you repeat?
So I don't think you heard you. You want to jump in, Mr. Manguala?
Yeah, if I could just jump into what I'm hearing a little bit. So first off, thank you very much, both trustees, for the incredible input. So again, the first time that a school district has the ability to look at assessment data. K-12 does obviously cause some concern. So there's a, there's a little bit of additional breakdown. So a couple things that I do want to communicate about trends and stuff. So when you look at the kinder level, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Booth, when you look at the kinder level, the primary tool that they're using is STAR early literacy at that grade, which is a different assessment than STAR reading. And so STAR early literacy, the point of that assessment is to judge readiness for reading. So it really is a different assessment. And so what I'd like to do for the board a little bit is to provide a little bit of clarity on that, to look at just STAR reading as a trend and pull out STAR early literacy, because that does tend to cause the trend to look a little bit different. So I do want to promise to bring that back up. But the trend is real in the sense that you do typically see, if you look at most standardized assessments, if you look at the days of casp and things like that, you do see a general downward trend as, as students progress through the system. So it is not unique to Napa Valley to see something like this. But yes, we definitely have some work to do. Again, what does 40% mean? So if you, if you score at the 40th percentile, that means that you're essentially scoring at benchmark or at grade level. And so obviously, we don't want to have scores sitting, for example, in the fall at 37% for fifth grade. We have a lot of work to do, and, and, and we definitely understand the need to continue to add books, look at our literacy program, and examine, and examine these results.
And Mr. Manguala, do we then, have we gone through the exercise of measuring if there's learning disparity between roomies and zoomies and creating targeted support programs if there is a differential between those two groups? I don't know.
So we have done a very preliminary analysis, so like literally in email format. And so, yes, there, there, there is a disparity. And so when you look at the three different assessments, STAR early literacy does buck the trend, and the kids at home are doing a little bit better on that. I, I don't know if that has something to do with how the assessment is given, and maybe there's a little more help being given at home. Because again, it's, it's, you're talking about kindergarten students taking an assessment on a computer. That, that may have a role. But for, for, for reading and for math, we did see that our students that who are coming in did score higher.
Okay.
We will provide something formal on that also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm certainly not going to disagree with Mr. Gracia about the importance of reading full-length books. We do want our students, as many as possible, to not just go to college, but be able to function when they get there. And there's a lot of reading, there's a lot of reading in college. In fact, you do about perhaps one quarter of your work in class, and three quarters is done studying afterwards. So, you know, it's, it is, as, as we always say, the foundational skill. Now, last May, Dr. Masetti spoke about the, this has, this has been going on for a while. She, she pointed this out and said that this, she considered it a failure, and we were going to improve. And it's very courageous to say that. It was at a really contentious meeting last May, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the explanation of the data, you know, where you actually have to do better to stay in the same place the second time. And it reminds me about Lewis Carroll's Red Queen and Through the Looking Glass, when she said, you have to run, you have to do all the running you can do just to stay in the same place. If you want to get anywhere, you have to, you know, run twice as fast. And so it looks like things are, it's a, I mean, it explained it to me. I mean, it's still sort of a senseless, but you know, yeah, that's testing. As a former teacher, I'm not insane about testing, and I'm willing to say that I think the pandemic has had a huge effect. And I think this test is an argument for the value of being back in school. If, if the students who are in class are doing better on this sort of test, then, you know, I think in-class instruction, as we all know, is important. You know, the Napa Valley Unified School District has, maybe our listeners don't realize this, but we have higher standards for graduate, requirements for graduation than the state does. The state is three years of English. We require four. They, they, two years of math, two years of science. The state only requires one year of a foreign language. We require two years. And they have, they can't be two first year, two first year. They have to be, you know, concurrent. And the counselors always say, if you do want to get into a college, you have to do better than that, really, because it's, it's all getting, it's gotten quite competitive now. All, this is, this is a huge issue. I went looking on the California Department of Education website over the weekend and discovered, I stopped counting when I hit 74, of tests and assessments and, you know, programs that the state of California, CDE, used, you know, over, really in, in my teaching career, which, you know, really didn't, was, you know, 25 years ago when I started working in the district. And, I mean, they were used, and then they were set aside because, you know, the results weren't there. And I guess our favorite test will be the one where everybody scores at the tippy-top. But I do think that, I know, I know that students are reading less. I know they are. I know young people, I understand that independent bookstores are incredibly trendy. They're a great backdrop for Instagram. But by and large, by and large, the majority of our students do need to read more. And if they're not doing it in high school, I don't think they're going to do it afterwards. It's, that's just not the way it works. And there are just too many other temptations, especially, you know, our, our parents have told us with working at home, you finish your assignment, you're looking at a device, you can start playing a game, just like that. I mean, there's just, there are too many distractions. And literally, the physical act of opening up a book, you fall, you literally step into it, you're moving to a different consciousness. And this has been, Princeton did a study on this in 2006, retention is greater on the printed page. I'm, I like a test where we can get the results quickly. The ones we had before, where we didn't get it until well into the fall, were utterly useless. They were ridiculous. And I have great reservations about testing during a pandemic, to tell you the truth. I really do, honestly. And, but I do think that we need to be working on literacy and math, of course. And, and certainly, I don't want to run in and wield my invisible powers as a, as a school board member and start dictating what teachers should do, because teachers should be part of, part of the discussion, too. I do think that over the last year, we've had more of an emphasis on literacy with the books that we have bought, how we have broadened the curriculum a bit, you know, or broadened the availability of books that are high-interest level to our students. I think our author's night is great and is well-attended, and, you know, I really want to build on that. And that's all I have to say. But, and thank you for, thank you for this, and thank you for this.
I just had a couple of questions. Well, first, I would like to echo what trustee Gracia and Water just said. As a, I'm a big believer in the, the actual physical holding of a book. And there is no substitute to actually spending time reading to improve your reading. It's sort of a, sounds like a, an obvious statement. I'm wondering how, if the staff thinks that the, the scores might have been negatively affected by the taking them at home. I know that, I, I heard Mr. Abud, you said that the kinder scores were the exception, but that generally, the in-person kids did better. So I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously, the data is concerning, and proficiency levels for our core skills are not where they need to be. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Everyone's expressed that very well already. But is there a thought about the sort of the pandemic, pandemic circumstances, not of the learning, but of the actual taking of the assessment? Or is there?
I can answer that for you if you like. So while the assessment was designed for students to take independently with very little input from teachers, you know, the role that the teacher typically has is to point the student to a computer, help them understand how to log in, putting in their, their login credentials and so forth. It, these assessments are computer adaptive. They were one of the first vendors that truly had a computer adaptive assessment, meaning the first question starts out very easy, and then it gets easier or harder based on if a student gets it correct or an incorrect answer until it finds the, the assessment finds a zone of proximal development, which means a question that's not too easy or not too hard. So the assessment, you know, technically should be able to be given at home or at school and hate, and have the exact same result, you know, based on that assumption. However, we know that the environment at home right now is not, is not the same as the environment in the classroom. As a school district, this, this is an experiment, giving, you know, an online assessment at home. There are a lot of different variables. And so, you know, we will always have an asterisk next to this data and say that it was given during a pandemic. But with this, with that said, it does, it does not change the overall trend of the data, which is the district has a lot of work to do in both reading and math. And trustee Gracia and the other trustees are all correct. We, you know, this is the, the data we have right now. We should really focus on using this, this very valid data when you look at it overall and use that to guide instructional and spending decisions.
How, how are the teachers able to use the, the data? Does it correlate with the curriculum? I understand it's a separate platform, but is this something that the site teams will be able to use to guide their instruction? Or is it sort of like the casp where it's, you know, connected because the skills are the skills, but that it maybe doesn't align?
Trustee Rizer, I'm going to have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings address the teaching and learning side.
Can I toss in one piece about the reporting there, Dr. Masetti, before she jumps in?
Sure.
Right a little bit of clarity? And so just to answer that question a little bit, this is just a summative score. The STAR assessments are aligned with standards. So in terms of having a standard-based alignment and having actionable data, there is absolutely, you can absolutely run a plethora of reports that provides actionable data. Now, in terms of alignment to the exact curriculum, that would be more along the lines of a work of a curriculum map. And at that point, I would like to pass it to Pat Andrew Jennings to talk about the curriculum.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Manguala. Yes, the, what teachers are doing with this information is they are pulling the reports just to know which students might need additional small group instruction to support their learning. They are able to compare it to the priority standards that have been identified and for language arts and math and, and use that information to plan their instruction. Also, the, as I think Dr. Abud mentioned, the, last week, the Renaissance came into a training with site administrators, and that trainer is also visiting school sites to work directly with teachers and providing them training on how to pull the reports. This is actually the first time we've had data that actually will show if a student is making progress. We have, one of our goals is about one year's growth in one year's time. And this, the Renaissance assessments are able to let us know our students making one year's growth in one year's time. And our goal obviously is to have more than one year's growth, but at least we have some way of measuring some progress. And teachers are using the assessment data to plan small groups and plan their instruction to some degree. This is a new assessment. So teachers are also understanding what reports they can pull and what information they can get from the system.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Can you clarify whether the STAR data tracks casp, casp data? I think that's what it's intended to do, correct?
Um, the, the answer is that is yes and no. And so I don't, I want to make sure we're not confusing the terms, because, you know, STAR was the old term also used for the, the previous state assessments. But with that said, yes, you do have the ability to pull a report based on this data, which is nationally normed, to, to, to serve as a prediction of how they would do on the casp assessment. So yes, this is aligned with standards. So you can run a report that, you know, gives you an idea of which standard should be worked on, which student needs intervention, and also you get an indication of what they, how did we do on a state assessment.
So, oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify. I, I believe that these proficiency comparisons are based to the national norm, not the, not the casp norm. And I don't know if Dr. Booth wants to clarify that.
Yes, that's correct. So the, the proficiency rates of being in the 40th percentile or above are based on the national norming. And so if we were to look at the casp predictability, those numbers would differ from what you're seeing in front of you today.
So if we look at the historical casp data that we have for third through 11th, or all the grades that are tested, it actually tracks pretty well third through 11th on the STAR test, except that we're getting the data much faster. So I'm really appreciative that we can see that happening already. And I agree with the other trustees when it comes to, I think we need to focus on reading. I know that from a, for fact, from just working with my own kids, that they're not reading whole books in, for discussion in the classroom. I mean, I, we are reading it outside because that's one of the assignments, is 30 minutes of reading a day. But I don't know how many kids are actually doing that. And so without the teacher saying that, hey, we're going to discuss this, we're going to make sure everybody reads chapters one through three, and then we're going to talk about it. I think that's more compelling for the students than me as a parent saying, hey, I think you need to be reading this book. Let's discuss it, because they probably won't want to. They have, they have more interesting things than talking about it with their mom, although I make them. So I'm a little concerned for, why are we not using the casp, the, the, I'm sorry, the STAR test data, even that baseline for intervention already? Are we doing that?
Ms. Andrew Jennings, do you want to answer that?
We are not currently doing that. What they are doing at the site level is looking at the students that are not making progress and using that for, to just make determinations around what supports a student might need. But in terms of like, like I said, this is a relatively new assessment. So they're not at the point yet where they can, you know, pull a report, take that and target a student's needs. We also have to be mindful that the students are only getting direct instruction for two and a half hours a day, actually, two hours and 20 minutes. And so that they are, you know, doing the best they can in terms of doing the small groups that they have because of the AMPM cohort and working with the information they have. But it is a challenge, because normally, they would have And working with the information they have, but it is a challenge because normally they would have additional time.
So I also know that there's going to be a growth score. Is that correct for any follow-up tests beyond the baseline, right? So we can see the growth of each student?
Yes, that's correct. So what Renaissance will do is it will calculate exactly what you just called out, the, the growth score based on multiple data points. So students actually, or teachers can, can actually look up growth scores at this point, now that they have two data points, which is very exciting. And that's actually what the training with the principals last week focused on and what many teachers have been very excited about. And I also wanted to just highlight the work that our interventionists have been doing at the elementary level. They've been getting a lot of training as well from Renaissance. And they are looking at growth, a growth scores, looking at grouping students and using this data to support with the interventions they're providing students. So that's happening for, for, for many students in our system.
And I'll, and I'll add that the intervention teachers are pulling students during their non-synchronous learning time. Primarily English learners that they're working with, providing additional English language development time.
Is that in, or is that going to be in person or is that just on Zoom?
It's, it depends on, it, well, right now it's mostly virtual, but if a student is able to come in person, then they, they're able to provide that.
Great. I'll look forward to seeing growth scores in the future. I think that's much more informative because we want to see growth across all of the, for all of our students, even the high performers. And my last question is, I know the last meeting in October, I think there was something about Renaissance Home Connect. Is that coming online soon? Because I think the original target date was before this winter assessment.
Yes, I can speak to that. And if Mr. Mangual would like to add to it as well. That was a system that we were looking at for the fall and, or something we were looking at in the fall and we're very interested in exploring. As we looked more into it, it did not seem like a, a good time to automate other digital tool and another database for families and students to have to log into and look at. So for now, we're actually, the scores are being posted into Ares after every screening window. And so parents do have access to it in that way. And many of our sites have been communicating, have been working with families to communicate what those scores mean and what it is that families can do to support students and their learning based on those scores. So for example, Silver Island Middle School has made a, a great flyer that they're ready to launch out to families soon. That talks about the different performance bands and what resources are available for kids. And so the sites are communicating out to families and, and all parents can access the scores from Ares, even if they're not necessarily looking at them through Home Connect.
So I've seen my son's scores, but I don't know what they mean. Because I never got any indications of how can, I can help my kids learn. And that seems, just by listening to different parents, that seems to be an inconsistent thing that's happening across the district. Different people, schools will provide them, other schools won't provide them. Or even within a school, teachers may or may not provide them. I'm not exactly sure what the level of complexity that is. But I was just thinking the Home Connect would actually make it easier and less burdensome on teachers to provide that, that information to the parents since now as parents and, you know, needing to be at home with their kids during asynchronous learning. This is their opportunity to help their kids and to teach whatever might be missing and to really help the schools as well for their kids' learning. So I'm hoping to see that soon.
And I'll, I'll respond to that trustee choose. I just want to contextualize everything and sort of ground us kind of back at where we are as an organization. So this is my third district in bringing in Renaissance learning at a system-wide level. I think when I did my 90-day report in, in advance of developing our strategic plan goal one, I shared with trustees and I shared with the community that I felt like the organization was sort of, you know, navigating blindly around student achievement in the core content areas of, of mathematics, numeracy and literacy. And that we needed some sort of K-12 measure and we needed to build an assessment framework that could help us determine how we were doing as an organization in serving our students when it comes to teaching and learning. And we needed a common tool because although the district had some tools that they were using, they weren't using them with full integrity and fidelity. And really some of the tools that were selected at a system-wide level were fairly weak in terms of the information that they provide. They weren't timely. I think trustee Water mentioned that even as a retired teacher in the district. And they weren't providing that live sort of data to really inform instruction. And I have a lot of confidence in Renaissance learning and the ability that, you know, this tool has to actually give teachers the tools that they need to respond to the data in real time. That's what moves the needle when it comes to academic achievement. So, you know, we leveraged the crisis as an opportunity to bring STAR in because we were blind before, but then with learning loss and, you know, virtual learning and the pandemic and kids in school, even if they're in person, they're only there in person. Half the time they would typically be with a teacher. You know, this has, you know, this is all laying the groundwork for an instructional crisis that I think school districts across the country and even nationally are going to be facing because of, you know, post COVID-19, you know, impacts and working through that. So I'm very, very proud that we as an organization brought in the tool at a time again, when I think most districts aren't even thinking about assessment. I'm super proud that we have a school board that's so engaged around the, the data. But I just do want to give us context, like we have a lot to do around the launch. We, we brought in the tool to get this kind of baseline data and then administer round two so that we could, you know, ground ourselves as we navigate the complex situation that COVID-19 has imposed. But we have a ton of work to do. I'm going to tell you that in order to get full implementation with integrity, where we will start to kind of see the needle moving. You know, it's going to take a couple of years. The teachers still need a lot of training. We need to do the parent piece that trustee Chu just mentioned. And, and we will, we will bring all of that to the system. You know, just as a reminder, again, it's, it's unusual times. We launched in unusual times. But I think that, you know, we, we did the, we've done the best we can with the conditions that we're working within, and it's a great start. And what's, what's really, really exciting is that in qualitatively, our teachers are reporting that they're excited that they now have this kind of a tool where they can monitor progress K-12. And so it's going to serve board members. It's going to serve us as a senior leadership team. It's going to serve our principals. They're going to be able to do great work. As we do better with our finances and we go to build intervention programs, we're going to do better at it because we're going to be able to respond to data. So it's going to give us the ability to be really strategic around what we do as an organization in order to close opportunity and achievement gaps for kids. So just, you know, to kind of give us the big picture of why we're here, how we're here. And know that we have a lot to do in order to get robust implementation of, you know, the full battery of assessments. How we use it then to impact teaching and learning classroom to classroom across all of our buildings. But we're excited. We're excited. You're excited because we will get there.
We're definitely excited. That's why we have so many questions of what's next.
Yeah, it's great. I'm, I'm super proud that the board's so engaged around this because that just sets us up. First, it sets up my staff. It sets up, you know, all of our instructional division and then the assessment and data services team, you know, to get charged up around the work because we know that when we implement this with full integrity and we implement it truly, that we have an opportunity here to make a difference for kids.
Right. That's why we're all here.
Yeah. I have, I don't have a whole lot to add. I agree generally with, with what everyone said, and I appreciate that context, Dr. Musetti. I think that one of the, the, the things I would add is kind of a, to urge a little caution on the reading of this data right now. We've mentioned the asterisk that's put on it based on the pandemic. But we're also, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about trends. This is two data points that we're dealing with. That's not a trend. We don't have trends yet because this is so new. So I think, you know, I, I, there, there is cause for concern for these data points. But there's not a, a, there's not a demonstrated trend, downward trend that we're, that we, that we're, we're addressing. In fact, in, in, you know, looking at the reading proficiency, the only trends we can see now are between the fall and the winter testing. And in the fourth through sixth grades, there's improvement in those areas between the fall and the winter. I think that, that's not to say that we don't have things to work on and, and that there isn't cause to concern. I, I just want to make sure that we're putting this in the context. And so it is a broader context than these two data points. The other thing I would say about kind of reading is just kind of championing eBooks. I know, I, I know there's a lot to be said about holding books and I, I love, one of my favorite places in the world is a bookstore. I, I just, I don't want to gatekeep the, the methods by which people engage with reading. You know, I, I had a friend who mentioned that they have, they have a baby, an infant. And their, their infant was chewing on the corners of a baby book. And they, they were wondering what they can do to get, you know, their, their child to stop chewing on the corners of a baby book. As, as a, you know, my kids did the same thing. We got these indestructible books that are, you know, made of a material that you can't like slobber through and, and tear. But my point is that I encourage them that any, at that age especially, any interaction with a book is an important development. It's an important thing. And that doesn't change when they get to school. The interaction, we hope, is not eating the books. But it's, it's, it's engaging with, with, with literature in some way. And I don't think that having an eBook versus a, a, a physical book it changes that in a significant way. So I just am, you know, championing eBooks in, in, in that context. But again, I, I, I do think that there's, there's, the fact that teachers can get this data immediately after the tests were administered is remarkable. I remember, you know, when my kids were taking these, these this year, we heard from our teacher what their scores were that class period. So that's a very impressive thing, especially in the context of not getting them for months after the test. So.
Interesting. Just one comment. I, I know staff does appreciate your recognition. I think just to, you know, I kind of give a macro context, but you, you've dovetailed with a nice micro context around trending, right? So these are two administrations. There are two administrations in pandemic conditions. We're not by any means not recognizing that we have a ton of work to do and literacy and mathematics has been echoed by the trustees very passionately. Again, we're thrilled that you feel that way. But I, I know staff appreciates too, that sort of micro context around the fact that it's two administrations during a pandemic and it's, and really first time assessment users on behalf of the, the staff, the kids, some of them at home, some of them in the classroom. So we look forward to like, you know, when we're getting in a rhythm and normal times and teach, kids are back in the room and teachers are using this to really inform their teaching and learning and give students feedback on how they're doing in terms of progress.
I think I'm the last one here. I think what I'm, my big takeaway with not only the data and the presentation, but the conversation and the discussion and the questions is that I'm, I'm, I'm leaving with that there's, we have a tool. And that's quite powerful. And, and that's something that we can feel that our decisions many months ago and so on have taken us, like just how long has that taken us to be today, to be looking at the data in front of us and that, that the data is telling, telling something, right? And I think that's where we are continuing to work together. And I think hearing from the staff, what is the support that they need from us is also equally important as us expressing where our questions are and concerns. You know, I was just looking back at my notes of, of the fall when the math task force was making their presentation and how they can, you know, came with their recommendations and they have their timeline as to when they were going to do their math course pathways, the instructional and professional development, the alignment of the curriculum, like all that work will come to completion. A lot of them have come to completion already, according to the schedule that was shared with us. But, you know, at the end of the year. And so, I mean, that just sets the tone a bit. And this is on top of a pandemic. So that being said, I think that's where I'm looking at, you know, as I look at the math task forces is our way of asking questions to see how the team is doing and what can we do to, to help them and supporting them in that timeline. You know, again, on top of everything else that is happening. I do support the idea of definitely having, you know, seeing the great work of the math task force and kind of setting the precedent of, of, of how the team does a due diligence and looking into the entire system along with the reading. So I think that's something to be said about our, as a team, as a process with the administrators and the staff and all the input that's brought into to really look at that. So I really do appreciate that idea of, of putting some resources into that. But I do know that we are a capacity in certain things. So definitely keeping an eye on that and, and that it's good for the NBUSD team to, to know that they have our full support that, to move forward and accomplishing any work related to reading proficiency. My, my only comment is that when we received in the fall STAR data, it was really nice to see some of the more additional data that had to do with the number of students in free and reduced lunch, as well as the number of students in English learners. Just because it sets the tone a bit in terms of when we're looking at the numbers. But at the end of the day, these are students, these are families, and they are undergoing through tremendous amount of pressure. And knowing that many families are undergoing through stress of evictions, families are losing jobs. Families are in more need of food. So I, I do, I do worry about our students' health and wellbeing. And we all know that we're, we are providing our, our, our free lunches to our families. But, you know, there's just so much, there's, there's only, there's so much more that our families are needing. And so that came to mind is the, the concern of our family's wellbeing, which is not just only under our control as a school district, but, but it's, it, it must be a, a community effort to address that. You know, just knowing that 40% of the households of children with children that are zero to five fall below the family needs standards levels, right? Like 40%. And what does that standard mean? It's just, it's lots of other data points, right? You know, and, and what a family needs to really fully, you know, live their, their potential in, in our community. That's a lot. And a majority of those are Latino families, which is a majority of our English learners, which is a majority of our children who are below the reading proficiency and, and math scores. But I do know that globally, we do have numbers in front of us that are definitely concerning. But I'm leaving with the hope that we do have the tools. And we do have a team that cares very much and that can lead us towards this, but it's definitely going to take time. So let's remember today and then look back because that's how long it's going to take. Like Dr. Mercedi said, two years from now and say, look where we were today, February 11th, 2021. To say the progress that we have made because we are making some really tough decisions. And we know that those decisions are due to making these numbers change. Everything that we're doing is to make these numbers change. So just really appreciate all of that input, just as Dr. Mercedi mentioned, of everybody really diving into the data and the numbers and, and having our, our, our questions and definitely our students at the center of all of it. Um, any other questions or points to share? Okay. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads here that everything seems to be good for now. So thank you, Peter Abud, for your presentation and everybody else who answered our questions.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So we're now moving on to item J2 instructional services. This is our local control and accountability plan of development process.
Yes, I am prepared. Mr. Ruiz, can you bring up the slide presentation? Thank you. And before I begin, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Abud and his, and the And before I begin, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Booth and his, and the Assessment and Data Services team. They have been instrumental and worked really closely with the Instructional Division. We consider them part of our family in instruction. So thank you, Dr. Booth, for all of your help and support and making sure we have accurate data. So thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and begin. Good evening again. President Gonzalez-Mares, trustees and student representative McGaughn. I would like to share with you the process we are undertaking to develop our next Local Control Accountability Plan, otherwise known as the LCAP. Next slide, please. The purpose of this presentation is to understand the LCAP, LCAP process and how we are approaching the development of our plan this year. We are focused on creating a clear plan aligned with NVSD's strategic plan that will increase student academic success in reading, writing, and mathematics, as well as support their healthy social emotional development. Next slide, please. LCAP funding is based on the number and the percentage of unduplicated pupils in our district. Unduplicated pupils are defined as English learners or students who qualify for free and reduced lunch or foster or homeless. Students are not counted twice. For example, a student who is an English learner and qualifies for free and reduced lunch would not be counted both times, just once, hence the name unduplicated. Currently, approximately fifty-four percent of our students are counted as unduplicated students. NVSD, NVUSD receives supplemental and concentration funds of approximately thirteen million dollars as a result. The LCAP is where we describe how we plan to allocate these funds to support the needs of our unduplicated pupils. Next slide, please. The state has eight priorities that we need to address in our LCAP. They range from basic services such as proper teaching credentials to course access for students. Our LCAP goals have to align to these state priorities. Next slide, please. In in USD, we use our strategic plan as the foundation for LCAP. Here are the six strategic plan goals that guide use in developing our LCAP. I believe the trustees are very familiar with these goals. And also that great picture that's added to this is actually taken, I believe it was at Redwood. So it's nice to be able to use student pictures in our presentations. Next slide, please. This slide shows the alignment between our strategic plan and the eight state priorities. You will notice that goals one, three, and five show the most crossover with the eight state priorities, although NVUSD's new LCAP will address all six goals of our strategic plan. Next slide, please. Every three years, the plan is completely rewritten. Our goals during the twenty-seven through twenty, twenty seventeen through twenty twenty were to increase rates of college and career readiness, provide equitable access and opportunities for all, and to develop educational programs that support healthy living. As many of you are aware, the NVUSD strategic strategic plan was adopted in December of 2018. In the spring of 2019, the three-year plan was modified to align with the new strategic plan. The LCAP was due to be rewritten in the spring of 2020. But due to the pandemic, the state directed us to complete a learning continuity and attendance plan. That plan focused on supporting students impacted by the pandemic during this current school year.
Yeah.
The development of the next three-year Local Control and Accountability Plan will continue to focus on addressing the impact of COVID-19 on our students and school community, as well as planning for the future. Next slide, please. The Instructional Division has begun the needs assessment this month. We are reviewing achievement and attendance data, as well as information from our social emotional screener given in the fall. For academic achievement data, we review the STAR assessment data that Dr. Booth shared earlier, as well as secondary grades, to give us an indication of how students are doing. We also look at course access data, graduation rates, and AP test results from last year. Recently, I have also begun our stakeholder meetings. I have met with CSBA membership, the Napa Valley Education Foundation Board, our school counselors, our intervention teachers, all in an effort to solicit input from them as to what's been working for our students and what supports might we need, might be needed in the summer or in the upcoming years. In the coming weeks, I will meet with NBA site reps, school site leaders, teachers, our D-LAC, students, and various other groups. Meeting with our stakeholders is a is critical to get a full understanding of the needs of our students as we draft plans to support them. Additionally, in March, a survey will be sent to, sent to the entire school community to gain more insight about how NVSD is doing and serving and supporting our students' academic and social emotional needs. Also, at the end of March, we will have the Completed Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, developed with guidance from PROMIS 54. That plan will help to inform us around goal five and two. In April and May, we will be busy drafting the plan and reviewing it with our district, District's English Learner Advisory Council, our district and parent advisory councils as well. Our final LCAP will reflect the action steps we will take to address the significant academic needs of our students as we saw tonight with our STAR data. In June, the plan will be brought to the board for a public hearing and a second time later in June for board approval. In between now and June, we will, you will receive, the board will receive regular updates regarding the plan's progress and development. That concludes my report. Next slide. Are there any questions?
Yeah, trustee Q?
Yeah, I have a question. So I'm going back to the current LCAP goals. Can you define for me what the district considers as college and career readiness? And how do you measure the increase in rates?
Well, what they did for prior LCAPs is they looked at the state has a a metric that they use for to indicate college and career readiness when students leave us in twelfth grade. And so what they have done in the past is look at that data to determine if we were making progress towards college and career readiness. So that's one point. And so in that, that state metric, they look at our students graduating A to G, completing all the A to G requirements. They look at if they completed a CTE pathway, if they completed a certain number of advanced placement courses. They also look at their scores on CASP in eleventh grade and if they've met or exceeded the standard for eleventh grade. And those are some of the metrics that the state uses to determine if we are, if our students are graduating college and career ready. In the past, we also looked at just the CASP data to determine if students are making grade level progress. Many of you mentioned, you know, the once a year, we used to call it an autopsy, right? Because it's not data that you can typically use by the time you get it to actually change and correct it, because a year is already passed, you know, or half a year, six months. So that is also what the district has used in the past to determine if students were moving in the direction of college and career readiness.
And did we achieve that goal?
Well, um, so looking at the different, like, if you look at the different metrics, so our graduation rate, like, that would be one indication that students are graduating college and career ready. So our graduation rate is eighty-eight point seven right now. And so that would say, okay, that's not too bad. But when you look at whether or not, like, if you look at the number of students who graduate A to G, it's, I want to say it's forty, it's in the like high forties. So and then if you, if you disaggregate based on like ethnicity or English learner, it's significantly lower. And so, you know, something we could say, some, we have a high graduation rate, eighty-eight percent, eighty-eight point seven. I mean, ideally, we'd want it significantly higher. But if you look at our A to G rate, you would say that we're, our students are not necessarily graduating college and career ready.
So as a way to reach this goal, do you, I know that we we look at kind of like more high school measures, with A to G is more high school classes, AP courses are high school. Do you plan on having anything more at the middle school? Because I kind of feel like we can kind of put, put that idea in their heads early on so that they would have more motivation to to be more college and career ready, whichever path they take. I kind of feel like they, they kind of need to have, I don't know, an earlier start, I guess, for for some of our students.
I agree. And I think one of the opportunities we have is with the STAR assessment and with ongoing assessment is making sure students are meeting certain benchmarks. I don't think we've ever had that in the past where you have certain grade level benchmarks that show students are making progress. And then at the middle school, as we think about our LCAP and in developing that for next year, looking at, you know, we do have a work-based learning coordinator and she has done some work with our middle schools around career, you know, exploring careers and having her do more work in the middle school around that. Because I agree, you can't wait until you get to high school to start thinking about what you want to do. We want to start kids to start thinking about that early. And the other piece that is a part of the puzzle is our career technical education, our CTE pathways. Because it's not just, you know, not all of our students are, you know, gearing up for a college career. But, you know, CTE is one of those ways that they can graduate and and have, you know, be prepared to, for a job outside, after high school. So that's another area that we can look at and see how we're doing with that and and having students actually complete the CTE pathway. We've also had some further conversations with the adults, adult education. And there are certain CTE pathways that are in the high school that could lead to some training and certification at the adult, at adult education. So connecting those counselors with the counselors at the adult, at adult ed to help students kind of develop that plan.
I'm glad we're going to focus on CTE at some point as well. And I'm looking forward to what the Middle School Redesign Task Force comes up with, because I think it's going to be very important for for that work to complete for us to be able to move forward to getting that I, the idea of college and career earlier on for our students. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say, Ms. Andrew Jennings, that I think it's so great that you're so invested in the stakeholder meetings that you're having, that that's just going to make the LCAP that you, that that you develop and that the team develops so much more organic and so much more buy-in if you're really hearing from from the people where the rubber, where the rubber hits the road. That's really the the people that know best and can give the nuanced answers about, about what will help them best help our students. So thank you for that.
I agree.
You're welcome. And in the past, I think that the, they held the stakeholder meetings after the plan was developed. And then, and then said, you know, what are your thoughts? What do you think? And I am taking a slightly different approach and really reaching out now to get input from them before we develop the plan.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, I think in that going and in being proactive and initiating the conversation with the stakeholders is so important. This makes me think so. I know you'll do your due diligence, but a lot of, almost like in in my work that I do with the first five commission in the NAPA network is a lot of empathic interviews where you you use just this human-centered design that I know I've had conversations with Dr. Mercedi about. We're really listening at the core of 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 what are the, what, you know, almost like an open-ended question, like, what can we do? And so I think lots of families absolutely want what's best for their kids and and the students. But I'm not, wouldn't be surprised if there's other issues that align with why. There's some many barriers to getting to that. But that's what this LCAP development does, so it's part of the process and I look forward to to the work. Any other questions on this item? And Mr. Ruiz, do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Okay, thank you. Right, we are now, we belong to items under K, action items. So K1, General Services. This is the adoption, K1A is the Adoption of California School Board Association Recommended October 2020 Policy Updates. This should bring back some memories from our last meeting.
So moved.
I second.
A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Jankowicz. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, motion passes, thank you. Now onto item K1B, 2021 California School Board Association Delegate Assembly Candidate Nomination.
So I would like to make a motion.
You'd like to make a motion?
I would.
Okay.
I would like to nominate David T. Gracia for CSBA Delegate Assembly Candidate.
I'll second that.
I think that's a fabulous motion. So first by trustee Jankowicz, a second by trustee Water. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Okay, and Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Excellent. Well, congratulations, trustee Gracia, you have had our vote.
Awesome.
On to the next.
You better have your vote.
I mean, we're on a trend here, right? Talk about trends, right? We're on KQED and news. Now we want our trustee up in CSBA, so let's keep that going. All right, so we're moving on to our item K2, Business Services, with K2A, Adoption of Board Policy 1321, Solicitation of Funds from and by Students.
So moved.
A first by trustee Julie.
Second.
And a second by trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, motion passes, thank you. Now K2B, Adoption of Board Policy 3452, Student Organization Fundraising.
So moved. Second.
All right, okay, thank you. First by trustee Julie and a second by trustee Gracia. Do I have public comment on this item?
There are no public comments, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. K3, in regards to Human Resources, so K3A. This is a Resolution 2116, Human Resources Reduction of or Discontinuance of Particular Kinds of Service.
So moved.
I have a first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Julie. Before we go to roll call, I'll ask if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Okay, Vera, can you conduct a roll call, please?
Yes. Student Board Member McGaughn?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Julie?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Okay. We are now going on to item K4, Instructional Services. K4A, this is the Comprehensive School Site Safety Plans.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Water. Any discussion, questions?
I will make this so fast, but I really did want, I like Donaldson Way. I mean, I know these were laborious to read and, but they did such a comprehensive job on their safety plan. They addressed the social emotional safety profile, the present day safety issues of COVID, the issues that directly relate to achievement, behavior, quality of life. Oh, sorry, anyway, I'm sorry, I will not repeat all that. Donaldson Way did an excellent job on their safety plan. I'll call it at that.
Oh, trustee, please go ahead, because I'm sure Donaldson Way would love to hear what you have to say.
I'll, I'll send it to them.
Okay.
No, you're right.
All right, so there was a shout out there to Donaldson Way by trustee Jankowicz. Any other comments? Okay, I had a first and a second. Any public comment on this item, Mr. Ruiz?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez-Mares.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Now on to item K- Now on to item K four B, Approval of Canyon Oaks Elementary School Operating as a Title One Schoolwide Program.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Julie. Is there any questions or discussion?
I have a comment. So my kids went through Canyon Oaks. One of them is still there. I just want to say kudos to the staff there because the school has been hovering around thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent free and reduced lunch for several years now. And so we never had the benefit of having Title One funds. But they were amazing at meeting the needs of those kids. Just looking at the test scores, you can tell that the kids really were receptive to the education that they got there. So I want to applaud the staff there. And that I wanted to also kind of report out, I was on the school site council meeting today as a parent, but of course, by default as a trustee. And they were recently honored by the Educational Results Partnership of schools with, that looked at the performance of schools in California and in Texas. And they just got awarded the Honor Roll School in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. So that was basically you're in the top twenty percent of all the schools that they valued, several thousands of them. And so I think they're really ready to get the Title One funds. I calculated they will get about one and a half times their original base salary, base budget, not salary, budget, which will do a lot towards meeting the needs of all those students. And it was just amazing to me to see them going from thirty-nine percent free and reduced lunch from last year to forty-nine percent now, which really speaks to the effect that the pandemic has on all, I mean, everyone. So we're really happy that they're getting more funding.
And also glad to hear that families feel safe to enroll in the free reduced lunch program too because we know that sometimes can be a barrier. So that's great. Kudos to the staff. Lots of kudos. I know we had a first and a second. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Reese?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Now to item K four C, Health Education Grant Award to Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Water.
Before we vote, I did have some question that I wanted to ask.
Yep, please go ahead.
I was curious if we're concerned about the quality of health education in PE class, why are we not encouraging our PE teachers to take this training?
I'll, I'll go ahead and respond. So the training was offered by Napa County Office of Education and we invited all, it's K twelve. So we invited all of our elementary teachers and as well as an invitation to our PE teachers and any other staff at the secondary level. We can't require it because it's after the, the school day, but we can encourage.
My suggestion would be to more specifically than encourage our PE teachers rather than just sort of leaving it as anybody that is teaching at secondary to take this class because it seems like this is a concern that we've had.
Agreed. And the reason why NCOE is offering this particular class is because that new health framework just was released by the State Department, the California Department of Education. So I do believe that the PE teachers were, you know, separately invited. So there, there definitely was a push for that.
Your microphone, President Gonzalez. Thank you, Dr. Masetti. We had a first and a second. Is, do I have any public comment, public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. I guess I was catching my voice was loud enough that I didn't know the mic was on. It was off. Okay, now we're going on to item K five, School Planning and Construction. This is K five A, SPC number fourteen dot two dash twenty-one, Implementation of the Modernization Program Plan Study.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Water. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez.
Questions? All right. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item K five B, SPC number one dot four dash twenty-one, Request for Annual Renewal of Contract with Colby Technologies.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Julie. Any public comment on this item, Mr. Reese?
There are no public comments for this item, President Gonzalez.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, motion passes. Thank you. Now on to item L of informational, these are items under the section Do Not Require Board Action. So we will start with Business Services. This is the December twenty twenty investment report. Robin, any? No comments? Okay. Okay, now we're going into enrollment report.
I just want to highlight that we are down somewhere between fifty and a hundred students since the last time this report was brought to the board, which was merely a month ago. So things are not looking great with, with our enrollment projections as we continue to lose students.
Yeah. Well, it shows that our projection was accurate, though.
It does.
Yes.
It does. I believe we were down fifty-eight or fifty-nine and it, it does show that declining enrollment is real.
Yep.
Yep, we're seeing every, every board meeting now. Okay, do I have any public comment on this item, Mr. Reese? Just to double check.
No public comments for this item, President Gonzalez.
All right, I know it's not a voting item, but just checking if anybody wanted to comment. Okay, so human, onto next item, L two, Human Resources, L two A, Quarterly Report on Williams Uniform Complaints.
Just want to say that we have once again avoided any complaints. Good job.
All right, okay, so now we're on to item M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent.
Oh, I have one. In the spirit of Black History Month, I started reading an interesting book called Black Walden, published by Elise Lamir. I mean, written by Elise Lamir, published by University of Pennsylvania. And it's just more about how slavery was foundational to the American economy. We usually don't think of slavery in Henry David Thoreau land. But in fact, he did write about it in Walden. And I signed up for, the Walden, the Thoreau Society is having a big hoopda on July eighth and I signed up for the virtual convention. And Ibram, a friend of mine is going to be reading a paper, but Ibram X. Kendi is going to be the keynote speaker. And speaking, and of course, we were all given a book by him to read, which he's, I really enjoy his writing. And like a true teacher, he released a reading list of about twenty-five books, you know, to prepare for this conference. And I have read quite a few of them because I'm interested in the subject. But I just started laughing and reminded me when I was in college, the teacher says, oh, here's an optional reading list and it costs as much as the entire semester quarter at Berkeley. Yeah, so he's a taskmaster.
Trustee Water, I think you probably have a very high star reading score.
Yes, we'll, we'll draw a curtain over my math score now.
He is, he's, he's working at Boston University now in the special seat that has been held by only one other person in the history of the university. And that person is Ellie Wiesel.
Yeah.
And so it's a tremendous honor for him as for my alma mater. But yeah, that doesn't surprise me that he has a reading list like that.
Trustee Julie and trustee Water, you might find it entertaining. We did try to get him for one of our author's nights, but we didn't get a reply. I think we're small potatoes for Mr. Kendi, but we did try.
I'll try for my alumni email address.
That would be pretty amazing. Yeah, that would be pretty amazing.
Any other? Okay. Moving to future agenda items.
I think I covered those pretty well earlier, so I'm not going to repeat them.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. You'd like to make a motion on our next item adjournment?
Sure, I'll move to adjourn.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Jankowicz. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Anybody oppose, abstain? All right, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Gonzalez for chairing an amazing meeting as I sit in my virtual chair. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti.